Good evening, welcome to the August 12th, 2024 Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Session. The board is just reconvened into open session from closed session. I just want to remind those that are here in the room with us that the public bathrooms are to your right, through these doors to the right if you need to find the facilities. Our board meeting tonight is being streamed from the new R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School, where we just did a dedication of this prior to our meeting. Board members, we are going to move to 4.01 where I will call for a motion to approve the closed session minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Floyd. Are there any questions or discussion about the closed session minutes? These will be kept confidential. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the closed session minutes for July 8th are approved as presented. We'll move to 4.02 where I call for a motion to approve the personnel report. I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Ms. Escobar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the personnel report is approved as presented. We will move to our opening ceremony at 5.01 if you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Board members will move to 6.01. I call for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Ms. Escobar. Is there any discussion about the agenda, board members? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda is approved as presented. We will move to 7.01, our CCS Athletics NCHS AA State Champions for Spring 2024, with Mr. Brian Tyson, welcome.
I think I got you on. Good evening, board members, Madam Chair, Dr. Kapiki, board members. I would like to call up Gianni Vines and Lilly Houston to come up front. We are here tonight to celebrate the Spring State Champions for Cabarrus County Schools through the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. First of all, we have Gianni here on my left. Gianni is a West Cabarrus High School recent graduate. He'll be moving on to UNCC next week, or not this, next week, this week, right? This Thursday. And Gianni won the state championship in the 4A high jump with a height of six feet 10 inches. Quite an accomplishment. And he will have the distinction of being the first state champion in the history of West Cabarrus High School. That'll be something nobody can ever take away from you, Gianni, and we're proud of you. Couple things on Gianni, he got a full track and field scholarship at UNC Charlotte. Gianni finished first in 11 of his 13 meets this year. The other two meets, he finished in second. He's all-state number one high jumper in all North Carolina High School Athletic Association classifications with a personal best and a state best, six feet 11 inches. And he was ranked as high as second in the nation this season. And obviously, he was all-county, he was all-state, and he was all-region and all-conference. So congratulations, Gianni, we're very proud of you. And you folks may have recognized this lady here with us here, this is Lilly Houston. She has been here with us now for the third time. She is a recent Northwest Cabarrus graduate. She won the 3A state championship in the pole vault again with a winning jump of 11 feet 6 inches. She also has had a personal best of 12 feet 6 inches. And like I said, she is a three-time state champion, outdoor champion in '23, indoor in '24, and now outdoor in '24 as well. And Lilly will attend High Point University, and I think you're going on Friday, right, Lilly? Saturday, okay. Saturday, she'll be going to High Point, and they have an esteemed pole vaulting team there, and she'll be a part of that, so she'll continue her career there. And Lilly plans to major in chemistry and pre-dentistry. And to be honest with you, Lilly became one of my favorite athletes to follow and watch this year. I'd look on Twitter, and then I'd go to the county meet, and the conference meet, and the regional meet at JM Robinson. I'd always had to weasel on over and find out how Lilly was doing. And she just had a wonderful attitude. And one day over at Robinson in the regional, she wasn't having her best day. She was a little bit off, landing a little bit crooked, but her demeanor was awesome, just a positive attitude. She talked to her dad some and her coach some, and she said, you know what? The day was a win. I got over the bar, and I got seven days to fix it before I go to the state championships. And she did, and needles will say she won the state championship again. So I just want to congratulate both of you. Maybe we'll see you at the Olympics one day soon, I'm not going to count you out for sure. And we certainly appreciate all that you've done in the classroom academically and also on our athletic fields. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move to 7.02, our Everyday Hero Award winner with Dr. Jonathan Bowers and Mr. Art Whitaker.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapiki. This evening, we are here to honor and celebrate an extraordinary member of our auxiliary services team. This individual embodies the true spirit of heroism in our everyday lives. Sponsored by Great Wolf Lodge, the recipient of this month's Everyday Hero Award is someone who has consistently gone above and beyond touching the lives of many through acts of kindness, dedication, and selflessness. Our honoree is not someone who seeks recognition or applause, but rather one who finds joy in making a difference, no matter how small that might be, whether it's through volunteering countless hours, supporting those in need, or inspiring others with their unwavering commitment to Cabarrus County Schools. This individual has become a beacon of hope and a source of strength for us all. Their tireless efforts have not only brought positive change, but have also reminded us of the power of compassion and the impact one person can make. It is with great admiration and gratitude that we present this month's Everyday Hero Award to Dustin Parker, a bus maintenance technician whose actions have truly made the world a better place. Unfortunately, Mr. Parker is unable to be with us this evening due to illness. But with me here tonight is Mr. Art Whitaker, our Transportation Director. And Mr. Whitaker is going to share with you why Dustin was chosen as this month's Everyday Hero Award recipient.
Members of the board, Madam Chair, Dr. Kapiki. Tonight, we gather to celebrate an extraordinary individual whose dedication to excellence has set a new standard for us all. It is my honor tonight to accept on behalf of Dustin Parker the Everyday Hero Award for Transportation. In the realm of yearly school bus inspections, the challenge is immense for each technician. According to the North Carolina School Bus Inspection Manual, there are 450 items in this book that can lead to a point deduction. Each inspection is like golf, the lower the score, the better the outcome. In this demanding environment, achieving perfection is nothing short but remarkable. Our recent inspection by the North Carolina DPI inspectors has showcased an unparalleled skill and commitment. Mr. Parker recently received a score of nothing less than flawless. He received two perfect buses, meaning the inspector could not find one item in this manual to issue a point deduction for. This achievement is a testament to his meticulous detail, to attention to detail, unwavering dedication, and the pride he takes in his work. Since we have all been watching the Olympics, this achievement is equivalent to winning two gold medals. It just doesn't happen, a perfect bus. Mr. Parker received two. Dustin's success goes beyond mere numbers. He reflects a deep-seated commitment to safety, reliability, and well-being of our community. His work ensures that our children get to school safely every day, and for that, we owe him a debt of gratitude. Lastly, if you take Mr. Parker's tenure with Cabarrus County Schools, which is six years, and his past inspection scores, this makes him, this makes his sixth perfect bus in six years. He's basically a six-time gold medal winner. I don't know how you top that. Mr. Parker, your achievement is an inspiration to us all. You have shown that with compassion, diligence, and the relentless pursuit of perfection, extraordinary results are possible. Congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. You truly embody the spirit of Everyday Hero. Thank you.
Okay, board members, we'll move to the approval of the minutes at 8.01. I need a motion to approve the minutes for July the 8th.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the open session minutes for July 8th are approved as presented. We'll move to 9.01, Board Chair Comments. The Board of Education just wishes our teachers, our staff, administration, a successful school year with our kids coming in tomorrow. We are excited for them, and we have our board member at the new R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School. We're excited for the students here in this new school, as well as all the schools across our district. We'll move to 9.02, our Superintendent Comments with Dr. John Kapiki.
Thank you, Mrs. Adcock. On behalf of the entire school district, I extend a warm and heartfelt welcome back to each and every one of you. Parents and guardians, your partnership is invaluable to the success of our students. We appreciate your ongoing support and collaboration in creating a strong educational foundation for our young minds. Together, we can empower our students to become confident, compassionate, and critical thinkers. I ask for your patience as the year begins, especially in the area of transportation, as our route planners work to make our bus routes as efficient as possible. Please be at your bus stop 10 minutes early and utilize the Edge Log app to track your child's bus. I also encourage parents to submit an application for free and reduced meals, either by using the Link Connect app or by using and visiting our school nutrition webpage. And finally, students and parents, please take advantage of the various extracurricular activities, clubs, and events planned for the year. These experiences not only enhance the academic journey, but also contribute to the development of well-rounded individuals. Thank you for choosing Cabarrus County Schools, and I look forward to a great year of engaging minds and shaping futures. And lastly, I want to thank our administrators and mostly our teachers for their dedication, compassion, and care that they exhibit on a consistent basis. I look forward to seeing them come back this year and beginning their work with our kids beginning tomorrow. So to all of our faculty and staff, thank you so much for all the work that you do. And to our bus drivers, thank you for what you do. To our food service workers, thank you for what you do. To everyone, our maintenance team, our custodians, all the people that touch a child in this, in this school system and helping them become better human beings, I thank all of them. It truly is, as I sit here tonight, I'm just awed by what our community can do. When you look around this building, this is the result of a community working together. So I appreciate that, and it speaks highly to the Cabarrus County School System and what we do here in our community. So thank you and the best for every, to everyone this year.
Thank you, Dr. Kapiki. We'll move to 9.03, our Board Attorney Comments. Mr. Ozenhauer, do you have anything for the board?
I do not.
Okay. We will move to 10.01, our Guest Speakers Address the Board. It is now time for public comment. The speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and an individual speaking for a group may be given five minutes at the discretion of the Board Chair to express interest and concerns related to the official business of this Board of Education. The speakers will be called in the order in which we receive their request. A person may not, may not be substituted for a speaker, nor may one speaker substitute or donate time to another. If a speaker runs out of time, then the speaker may leave additional information with the board clerk. Statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. Any limitation on public comments shall be viewpoint neutral. The Board Chair has the authority to rule the speaker out of order. If a speaker or attendee willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts this meeting and refuses to leave after being asked by the Board Chair, then the speaker may be escorted out and could be arrested for trespassing or disrupting an official meeting. So we'll start with our first speaker. If you'll come up to the podium and cut on, the speaker is Paul Wanish.
I have handouts for the board afterwards.
We can give those to Kristi, and she can get, take those and give them to us.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Kapiki. I'm speaking about the quality of the educational environment, though this building is exquisite. We have been a county of immense growth since 2010 through 2022, while providing a meager school capacity growth in the same period. Numbers from the Census Bureau and Fed Reserve include population up 32% in the county to 235,000, school-age kids up 34% to 43,000, household incomes up 60% to 80,000, county FINC ratings up, up to AAA, but still the district education system has not kept up. The CCS Board and Commissioners and Health Department have all not delivered the necessary infrastructure and procedures for our students. There are a few new campuses for schools, other than this one and one built, I believe, in 2022. Some replacement schools have been proposed, but then also other schools closed. The Board should be commended for asking the county for securing funds for your, for your needs, but since 2018, the Commissioners have never provided what you requested. In 2021, you asked for funds for a new high school, I think Northwest Cabarrus, but still no contract in place. You've asked for funds for temporary classrooms, but these have been in place since 2009. What is the real definition of temporary? And you haven't used the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction's planning, school planning, or at least ignored their advice. In 2014, DPI documented modular unit guidance and other advice for optimal size of elementary schools, which was apparently ignored, causing much of the current problems. Now, most of the CCS elementary campuses no longer comply with North Carolina sanitary building codes, something even residents, residential units must comply with. Now of the 98 modular units we have in the district, 67 of them need proper remediation on 18 different campuses. Trying to use modular units for temporary classrooms is actually quite difficult, and providing permanent brick-and-mortar schools is far a better solution. I believe you need funds and a deployment plan that just can't wait. The Commissioners have done nothing, the Commissioners have not done their job, defined in North Carolina Statute 15, 115(c)(521). Board of Commissioners shall give a reasonable time to provide the funds, which you documented, and they have failed. As other districts have done, it's time to file a legal action to acquire the funds you need from the Commissioners. Then it will be the CCS's Board's duty to catch up to the economy and deploy new schools. We know you may even, you may even relieve your busing situation with schools closer to the kids' homes. You might even stop the exodus to charter schools with the current charter applications 20 times the available seats that they have available, growing four times faster than the size of CCS. So this Board and the County Commissioners should view this as a payback of personal debt for the education they received, or the Board of Commissioners and this Board paying back the, paying forward for the opportunities for new social enablement, or frankly, the compliance with the North Carolina state law. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Will Staten. Welcome, Mr. Staten.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Will Staten. My family resides at 75 Grove Avenue Northwest here in Concord. My wife and I have a one-year-old son, who in four years will be enrolled in the Cabarrus County School System. We have a strong unified belief in the public school system process. Our home is directly adjacent to the teacher parking lot of the current Coltrane Webb Elementary School, and if the current site plan for the new school remains, our home will be directly at the entrance and exit of the new school. We have followed the process of realignment and the tenure plan for the future that you guys have gone through over the last few years. We commend this Board for having the intent and foresight to think beyond their current terms by proactively planning for the immediate and future needs of this county. Most often, change is not satisfactory to all involved. As elected leaders, you have accepted the task of making the difficult choices for the greatest benefit possible for as many students as practical. Some members of this school board understand this task and are more concerned with serving the students of this county instead of getting re-elected to this Board or elected to what they view as a more prestigious political position. Ms. Adcock, Ms. Treadaway, Ms. Escobar, and Mr. Floyd, thank you for putting the needs of the educational system of this county over your personal feelings, friendships, and even family members' feelings by voting in favor of the realignment and 10-year construction plan. As far as the plan to build a brand-new 750-seat Coltrane Webb Elementary School, we urge you to forejoin. We can't wait for the construction to start, because that means the kids of this district will be that much closer to attending a brand-new school, a school with the latest and greatest technology, a school that is more secure and safer, a school that doesn't have mold or mildew, and a school that will give the teachers what they need and deserve to provide the best education possible to our children. Although the traffic in our neighborhood comes with inconvenience, we pursue, perceive that as a small cost to improving the educational opportunity in the Cabarrus County School System. We understand this argument for smaller schools, but simple math and economics shows that maintaining and staffing one larger school is much more cost-effective than two smaller schools. Money should not be the sole factor in making the, making the decisions about our educational system, but it has to be taken into account. The latest revaluation process in our county proved that paying higher taxes is anything but popular among our residents. So it would seem that spending more money is not what citizens want, which is what continuing to maintain smaller community schools will do, and the cost will only increase year over year. While we would love for our son to attend a brand-new, small, 250-seat community school, if that can't be provided to all of these students in the county effectively, then a brand-new school that's larger is the next best thing. In closing, the current Coltrane Webb parents with whom I've had meaningful conversations that have children who are the stakeholders in our system, we welcome a brand-new, larger school in the Coltrane Webb community. Please do not allow a few to delay this and jeopardize the future of Coltrane Webb Elementary as well, because you have the opportunity to set our community up for success for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Our third. Our third speaker is Walker Dabs. Welcome, Mr. Dabs.
Thank you. Welcome, and I appreciate y'all giving me a chance to speak. My family lives right across the street at 67 Georgia Street to the playground at Coltrane Webb, so I can stand on my front porch and watch kids play all day long, no matter the time of day. It's a personal history. My grandparents went there, my parents went there, I went there, and both of my kids just recently graduated from Coltrane Webb. We love that school, mainly because of the multiracial and diverse school that it offered there. I mean, the staff promoted a strong connection between families and the school. It's also a highly sought-after STEM school, because we had no people that drove all the way from Moss Creek, from, I even know some parents that live in the Beverly Hills District to send their kids to Coltrane Webb. They won't admit it, but they did. Rebuilding can potentially increase property values and attract new families to the area. So basically, I'm just here to show my support for Coltrane Webb, no matter what the school is, size doesn't really matter to me. I believe the Board of Education and the County Commissioners all agree on rebuilding is what's needed for the students and the community, and if we can just keep politics out of it, I think that would be the best thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our fourth speaker is Jennifer Hall. Welcome, Ms. Hall.
Thank you. Good evening, thanks so much for having us and letting our voices be heard tonight. My daughter is a recent graduate of Coltrane Elementary. We live on 39 Yorktown, so looking off of our front porch, we see right into the parking lot, the main entrance. We've had the pleasure of walking our daughter to school for the last two years. Upon moving to the community, she was part of a charter school, and we made the decision for her to go to Coltrane. She saw friends walking there every single day. It is the heart of our community and North Union, and we want to see it rebuilt. Again, no matter the size, how big it is, we simply want a school there to see our neighbors' children go to that school, to see them walk to school every single day, and just really have that tradition moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelly McCarthy. We'll move on to our next speaker, which is Melanie Freeman. Welcome, Ms. Freeman.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Kapiki. Last week, you discussed the underfunding of arts and athletics, and tonight, I'd like to address the value of instrumental music in the schools by sharing some research. In the American Psychological Journal, the Journal of Intelligence, and the Neuroscience Journals, and numerous others, the studies all bear out that comprehensive instrumental music programs improve cognitive skills, emotional health, and academic achievement. A 20-year study was conducted in Canada of 112,000 students, following them from grade 1 through 12. The study included every ethnic, socioeconomic, and gender group. The result was, and I quote, "On average, children who learned to play an instrument for many years and were now playing in high school were equivalent to one full year ahead of their peers in academics of English, math, and science. These strengths were significant regardless of their background or prior achievements," end quote. The first thing cut in school budgets is usually the music program, the argument being that we need more money to focus on math, science, and English. The irony is that the research has shown just the opposite. Multiple years of high-quality instrumental music training and advanced choir actually improves all-around academics. What are these benefits? Research shows the following: coordination, tactile skills, learning skills, team playing, self-discipline, cognitive learning, improved self-esteem, pattern recognition, focus, replicating skills, cooperation skills, counting and math skills, and many more. As an adult who grew up with instrumental music in the schools, and that was in Charlotte-Mc, I can absolutely tell you the benefits. I came from a lower-middle-class family that could not afford to buy an instrument. I played on a used school instrument that was supplied all the way through my career, elementary to high school. I carried my instrument back and forth on the bus. And later in 10th grade, I auditioned and made it into the Charlotte Symphony on that used instrument. Academically, I graduated at the top percentile of my class, as well as many of my musical peers. You have the opportunity to become the flagship of public schools if you model yourself after excellence and success. Technology is not the answer to all our education needs. Technology cannot replace human touch or feeling. It cannot replace a person's ability to express their emotion or soothe the soul. These are things music does, as well as enhancing a child's learning experience. Go back to when America was number one in the world of education, and you will see that music was a part of that story. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Hanslick. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Kapiki. I've come tonight to speak on behalf of parents and neighborhood members for Coltrane Webb. I grew up in Concord. I had the pleasure of attending Beverly Hills, Concord Middle, Concord High School. With that education, it gave me a chance to join the Navy. And when I was done with my service, I looked for places around the country to raise my family, and I kept seeing Concord at the top of the list amongst all sorts of choices, and I decided... Concord at the top of the list amongst all sorts of choices, and I decided to come back here. And I strategically decided to buy a house within the district of Coltrane Webb. That turned out to have been one of the best decisions I could have ever made. I have three children, that, two of whom I've already graduated from there, one of whom is up the hill right now, who couldn't even imagine a life without that school. And with the opportunities, the friendships, the guidance, and the leadership, especially of the principals, Principal Smith in particular, I would really, 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 on behalf of so many other taxpayers, parents, and neighborhood members, really appreciate confidence that the school will get built, rebuilt, to completion. Ultimately, it's confidence that myself and so many other members of the crowd tonight are looking for. You guys are the only ones that ultimately can bring the good news to us. I understand that maybe you have to go above yourselves, up the totem pole, to find other ways of getting that approval, but it needs to be done, whatever means necessary. The school is underneath the microscope, not just from members of the community like myself, but from institutions like, for instance, Eli Lilly, whose project manager came and spoke at our Rotary Club, just like Dr. Kapiky did, and made it very abundantly clear that the STEM schools were one of the primary reasons for relocating and depositing $2 billion into our community. That seems like a lot of money that should not be dismissed. A lot of jobs, a lot of prosperity comes from supporting these particular schools, and I just wish that we can gain confidence from your actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lee Schuman. Welcome, Mr. Schuman.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Kapiky. I've been up here several times. I don't need to introduce myself, but I have a lot in common with all these Coltrane Webb folks. I think that all of their comments tonight are absolutely heartfelt and completely appropriate. I wouldn't like to say that. I think our Save Our Schools Association has always fought for those community schools. We've never looked at it as an either-or, it's a both-and. One of the things that this staff actually told this Board of Education was that it would be $31 million to build a new 500-seat school. It's actually a 532-seat school on the site of Beverly Hills, and one of the things that we were hoping for was for that same-size school to get built at Coltrane Webb. And we've heard a lot of people say, "Well, look, if you add $31 million to $31 million, that's $62 million, and that's a whole lot less than $50 million." That's true, but that's for 1,064 seats, not 750 seats. If you look at the cost per seat that the staff of the school system actually told you, it was $58,000 a seat to build those smaller schools, not $66,000 a seat for this larger school. That's just what your staff told you. That's not my words. There's tons of information about why smaller schools are better, especially for these populations of students. As much as I appreciate Will's comments, and I've got a chance to meet him, he's right that we should have this for all the people that need those small schools, but there are specific vulnerable populations in this county that would really do well by having those schools. It's been proven out at Beverly Hills. It's the second-rated highest school for growth in the county, and it's a Title I school. That's attributed to the growth of that school because of the teachers, the parents, the community, the support. So I have a lot in common with these folks, and I think every one of their comments are completely appropriate tonight. But I came here tonight really to talk about engagement. It was spoken about at the last board meeting, that the school system will only engage once everything's set in place and they've got a design intact, and they have funding. Well, that's not engagement. That's dictating. Engagement has a participation part. It'd be like me telling my wife that I engaged her in the conversation about buying a new car because I told her it was showing up on Wednesday. "Hey, here's the new car you're ready to build." I didn't engage her in the decision. I didn't participate, she didn't participate in that conversation. Engagement requires you to reach out to people and engage with them. Brian Floyd asked, "Why are the Mary Frances Wall parents not up here? Who's not talking about them?" Well, I'm talking about them tonight. Have they been engaged with? Have we talked to those folks and asked them if they have to travel further to get to Beverly Hills because that's a central location that they're at now? Is there a better location somewhere for a brand-new facility that serves the entire county? Or is that being just put there so that we can free up the Glenn Center, move the county offices to where the Mary Frances Wall Center is, which is what Dr. Kapiky told you last week, so you can give the Glenn Center back to the county? That isn't, that isn't taking the Mary Frances Wall parents and their students and putting them up here. That's using them as a pawn in the whole thing. That is not, that, it is disingenuous to say that. Why weren't they included in the Cooperatives Strategy Study? If Mary Frances Wall was that important, which we think it is, why was it not studied? What we were fighting for is for what happened this week, which is we have all these kids going back to school, this wonderful, brand-new school that these kids get to come and attend. On the other side of town, there's kids crying because they have an hour-long bus ride instead of a two-minute car ride with their mom and dad. That isn't hyperbole. That's a fact. When you engage with the community, you get buy-in from the community. When you get buy-in from the community and you have people who actually work together with you to accomplish wonderful goals like this. So I am with every single one of these parents at Coltrane Webb. I hope that new school gets built. I wish it was getting built smaller because I think it'll serve that community better, but that's okay. We can disagree on that. But absolutely, they need a new facility. Absolutely, Mary Frances Wall Center needs a new facility. This is not about an either-or. It's not about sacrificing the needs of some vulnerable students to meet the needs of other vulnerable students. I hope you'll take that into consideration and engage and change that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julia Hartzell-Chisholm.
Welcome. Hello again. Despite one of the goals of realignment to reduce commute time for students in Cabarrus, our commute time has more than tripled. There are four other elementary schools closer to my house, including this one, this beautiful one that I'm very impressed with, including the one up on the hill, their original site, Coltrane Webb, which is only two miles from my house. And they're occupying a school right now that was deemed worse than Beverly Hills, but we still had to close it. The time it would take for my kids to get home on the bus is now 58 minutes. At least, I guess, it's on the back end of the day after all the academics are done, but you know that there are kids who are opposite, riding 58 minutes to school. One of my sons has impulse control, trouble with focus, he gets overstimulated in loud and chaotic environments. I know it's not me because I have a control group. He's a twin. The other one's fine. But if Cecil had to ride 58 minutes to school, he would arrive frazzled, mentally exhausted. His behavior would likely be terrible, and this is not because he doesn't have parents who love and care and support him. He's been to OT, he's been to PT, he's been to everything, every conference under the sun. I've read and researched everything. I've spent more than enough time in a place of parental guilt and shame because of some of his impulsive choices. But my better self knows that he has a good heart, and he's just a child with a 58-minute bus ride. Children like him would have had an opportunity for a short car ride to school or even a shorter bus ride. It used to take me 16 minutes on my feet on walk-to-school day. I fear that kids like Cecil will deal with this stress by acting out, remaining unfocused, and that behavior would become a habit and eventually part of their own self-definition. I know my own son would do that because he already does, and it breaks my heart. I come to you for a few reasons. Ms. Escobar, you wanted to know how the children were doing. Our family's already struggling. We haven't even started school yet. We've had to rearrange our jobs to be able to pick them up. I don't have that kind of freedom as an hourly worker. A lot of Beverly Hills families do not have that kind of freedom. A lot of Coltrane Webb families don't have that kind of freedom to negotiate job schedules. The other reason I ask is each of you who voted to push realignment this abruptly, take a moment to consider what additional hardship this closure has placed on 300 students in this family and their families. Be honest with yourselves. Stop calling the Coltrane Webb Replacement School a combination school when you have no intention of ever redistricting us there. Stop calling it that. Mr. Tim Lauder said that himself. You have no intention of redistricting Beverly Hills students back to Coltrane Webb. Consider your role in this governing body. It should be thoughtful, engaging, representative of Cabarrus County. You have the opportunity to hold CCS to a higher and better standard, to think of more creative solutions to educating our children with quality education and equitable. In closing, I want to publicly say that the community in Beverly Hills are asking you to take responsibility, holding Dr. Kapiky and CCS accountable, to figure out how to fund Coltrane Webb. It needs to be rebuilt and on time. You need to see to it that Dr. Kapiky and staff ensure Coltrane Webb does not fall to the same fate as Beverly Hills. And while you're at it, maybe consider redrawing the lines to include Beverly Hills. Maybe we too can participate in a walk or ride to school again one day. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Tara Bingle. Welcome.
Hi, how are you this evening? So, good evening, members of the school board, and just want to thank you all and, of course, all the wonderful staff in the Cabarrus County school systems for showing up every day for our students. So I stand here before you today as a resident. I live directly across, behind Coltrane Webb, actually in the Gibson Village neighborhood where I'm the president of the Gibson Village Community Association. I'm also a parent that sent my son to Coltrane Webb, and like many of my neighbors over here, like, I moved to that house for that school. Coltrane Webb, or, excuse me, Gibson Village is a bit different than the historic district. We have a median household income that's below $40,000, about 25% black African-American residents, 28% Hispanics, Latino residents. So let me be clear. Small schools have really worked for the Gibson Village community. Despite 15% of Coltrane Webb students being economically disadvantaged, 87% of those students are performing at the third grade, performing proficient in their third-grade reading level. That's 10 points higher than their Cabarrus County counterparts. Chronic absenteeism is lower, it's 17%, compared to 21% with their, the Cabarrus County elementary students. And then the English learner proficiency at Coltrane Webb, it's 41%, that's 17 points higher than the 27-point, or, sorry, 14 points higher than the 27% average for Cabarrus County elementary students. So these aren't just numbers. They're proof that our small, neighborhood-centered school is succeeding where other schools are failing, failing similar kids that are economically disadvantaged. We should be asking ourselves, like, what are we doing right here? You know, what were, like, why was this, why was this school outperforming others? How can we emulate that? Instead of asking ourselves, how can we save money in this per pupil spending? I really believe that by investing in students now, that we're spending, we're saving money across the lifespan of that student. You know, this is, you know, I think it's more the role than just our school system. It's the county, it's Department of Justice, it's healthcare systems that really should be investing in this with us. You know, after reviewing several years of capital plans, I really feel like that this decision to replace Coltrane Webb and combine Beverly Hills, that was already, that was already made prior to the realignment study. And now I feel that we've really rushed to this decision to move students to Arbrown-McAllister in an attempt to build a new school in just two years. I think that this approach, it really erodes trust in our public institutions, and it's just detrimental to democracy and public participation that we should really be modeling to our students. Public participation, it's just, it's the cornerstone of democracy. Moreover, just the plan to replicate what you have here at Arbrown-McAllister, a 30-acre site on a 10-acre site at Coltrane Webb, it just doesn't seem, it just doesn't seem feasible. It seems fundamentally flawed. I read an article in the paper, in the Independent Tribune, on the sixth. Brian Cohen said that that, that Arbrown was designed to make the best use of this site here, this 30-acre site that has this big tree canopy surrounding it, separating it and creating some privacy from neighbors. That's not, please visit the site at Coltrane Webb. That's not what we have there. I've heard the board's stance last week on really, you know, holding back on any type of engagement until plans are finalized. This kind of "we-know-best" attitude, it really echoes the disastrous urban renewal policies from decades ago. It undermines the intelligence and maturity of taxpayers who can certainly distinguish between something that's in an ideal state and then something that's finalized. You don't have to worry about letting us, you know, us being let down. We're mature, we can navigate, we just want to be a part of this process. So therefore, I'm really, you know, asking this board to look at these current plans, engage in meaningful community consultation and engagement, public participation, and consider alternatives to the 110,000, 115,000-square-foot building that's going to serve 715 students, and, you know, do this out of respect just for the educational needs as well as the community needs, and I hope that we can work together to create a school that serves our children and serves our community as well for generations to come. I just think that this is important to our community, our democracy, and our children, our future, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move to reports. 11.01, board members, are there any committee reports? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move to 11.02, our Human Resources Update with Dr. Michael Williams. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapiky. As we embark on the start of the 24-25 school year tomorrow, we are trending positively on filling classroom teacher vacancies across our district. Our hiring season began in April and continued through the summer. Over the course of the last few months, principals, assistant principals, and our human resources team all work collaboratively and diligently to identify, vet, and hire strong candidates to lead classrooms in our elementary, middle, and high schools. We currently have 12 elementary schools with no vacancies, five middle schools with no vacancies, and three others with only one, and five high schools with no vacancies, and three others having only one. As of tonight, we feel extremely confident in our school's ability to provide high-quality instruction in all classrooms while maintaining a safe and orderly learning environment starting tomorrow. We credit you and our partnership with the county commissioners for the increase in our local supplement to 13%, which helped tremendously in attracting talent to the district. And we look forward to continuing to work together to incentivize the most effective teacher candidates to join Cabarrus County schools. Prior to the official start of the teacher workdays, our HR team hosted new employee orientation, where, a three-day event where employees engage in a series of onboarding sessions. This year, we welcomed just over 300 new employees to Cabarrus County schools. We do have, still have classroom teacher vacancies in some critical areas, including elementary school, where we have about 19 vacancies, EC, where there are now 14 vacancies as of today, math, we have nine vacancies district-wide, and six vacancies in science district-wide. I'd also like to note that our EC department offered sessions at new teacher orientation, at RISE, and at the EC opening session yesterday, training 27 new EC teachers. Additionally, last week, rather. Additionally, the EC team has developed a contingency plan for each vacancy to ensure students are safe and receive their required accommodations and modifications. Further, our principals and assistant superintendents have done a wonderful job ensuring a plan for each of the non-EC vacancies to ensure students are learning tomorrow morning. Please rest assured that as recommendations are made for any remaining vacancies, our HR team will work diligently and quickly to process those hires so candidates can be in front of children as quickly as possible. And finally, we want to acknowledge the hard work of our school leaders, our principals and assistant principals for staffing their school buildings to prepare for opening day and beyond. We want to also extend gratitude to the HR team for their remarkable work processing those 300-plus hires and facilitating onboarding activities during this season. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Any questions, board members? Ms. Sandage?
It's working right? Yep, it sure is. So thank you for all of the work that you all have done to get us ready for this school year and hiring staff and making sure that they're trained and they get what they need. It was really great seeing all those new teachers a few weeks ago. The question I have is specific to EC, and you know this already, we've had some conversations. Can you tell me what that contingency plan, or give me an example of what that contingency plan looks like? plan looks like to make sure that we are covered and our students in EC are getting what they need?
Sure. So for those, right now, 14 vacancies that we have, we'll be utilizing a couple of different things. Our Student Services Office and our EC office have worked diligently to work with teachers who may be in the building, who may be, who might pick up additional caseload for compensation to cover students that are in the building. Our EC coordinators and EC program specialists at the district office will also be providing support in those very critical areas, for example, of a centralized classroom where we know we need to make sure we have a teacher in that room. And so while our principals continue to hire and we continue to recruit, we do have staff in our buildings and at the Ed Center who will be providing on-the-ground support in schools for students.
The only other question I had was in relation to the writers. Can you tell me, is that spread across the district? Because I know that quite a bit of time goes into writing those plans, and I think we still have people who help to write the plans. Can you tell me what that looks like at those schools that need it most, and also at those schools that are doing okay?
Yeah, so we do have a handful of EC paperwork writers, folks that just work writing the IEPs. They're part-time, a lot of those folks are retirees that still have an active license. They are assigned strategically to schools, particularly schools who have vacancies, to make sure, in many cases, if a teacher is picking up additional caseload, like working with more students, we would, our department, our EC department would have assigned an IEP writer to help that person so they're not having to do paperwork and additional service time. Those decisions were made very strategically in those places where we knew those folks were going to need that additional support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Ms. Escobar?
Thank you. Thank you for all the work. A big thanks to all of the staff and the teachers for open houses and dealing with Debbie and all of that. So I just want to say, my biggest concern was what happens when you show up and your kid doesn't have a teacher? And so I can tell you, that happened to me, and one of our teachers hasn't started yet. But I, big thanks to the staff that I saw. We had someone standing there explaining what was going to happen, how it was going to happen, and even if the teacher wasn't able to start tomorrow, what was the plan to be? So I hope most people experience that at open house. If they haven't, who should they turn to if they're concerned about their kids and their teachers?
Yes, we would ask them. So we did make that an expectation for our principals. We had, our assistant superintendents did a great job communicating with our principals what to do in the case of those situations. What we would suggest is the principal is the expert in that building. So if we have a parent who is concerned about that, they should reach out directly to the principal with those questions, and our principals are certainly well-equipped and knowledgeable to be able to answer that for them.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Ms. Lindsey.
Thank you. I'm going to take it back real quick to what Ms. Sandage was talking about with the EC. So I know that you mentioned part of the contingency plan is to have other teachers to help assist, but I also know that there can be some difficulty in the EC classrooms. Are those teachers being trained on how specifically to deal with those, you know, potential children and the issues that they might encounter while they are filling in for some of those areas?
Yes, there's, for each of those places, there's been a specific plan and a specific training that has gone in place to make sure that we have covered all of those, all of those possible situations.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sandage.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Did you tell us about busing and transportation?
Sure. So we remain in need of bus drivers. If we've got folks out there that are interested in being bus drivers, we encourage them to reach out to the Transportation Department. They are hiring. We are going to have double routes tomorrow when we begin school. We are about 37 drivers short right now. We do have folks that are in the pipeline, and they are moving through, but that is a fairly complicated process in that we have to work with the North Carolina DMV to get them licensed. But we are moving them through as quickly as we possibly can. When I ran the report from last week, we hired eight new employees for transportation, but again, there's an onboarding time there, and those hires were made last week. So the answer there is that it is going to be a difficult situation. I'm very proud of the folks in transportation. They did, they do magical work over there to try to route those buses to cover places where we're short drivers, but it is somewhere between, right now, 37 would be my number, but between 35 and 40 drivers short. And we're going to, again, we're, those are things, just being prepared for double runs. Our drivers will do a great job picking those up, but there will be some time. We are continuing to recruit and hire as quickly as we possibly can for bus drivers.
And did we still have difficulty with the trainer? I know we lost a trainer. Is that still the case?
So it is, I'm not the exact best person to answer that, so I know, I thought I saw Mr. Whitaker here.
I saw Art leave, I think.
Not sure if he's still here or not. He left, yeah. So my understanding is it is moving a little more efficiently now than it wa, I did speak with Art, and Art Whitaker and Matt Herlock are the directors in transportation. Seems to be moving a little better than it was, but again, it is still, we are still very dependent on the DMV to make that happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Ms. Lindsey.
I'm wondering if we have any more updates on the potential salary increases for that department and moving forward?
So those did go into effect with the salary study? So there were, that we, again, you guys had done some increases for bus drivers over the years, but that, along with the rest of our classified staff, the increases for transportation did go into place on the paycheck at the beginning of this month?
So they've already gotten?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, we're continuing to review those to make sure that we've gotten folks and given them all their experience, credit for everything, but yeah, those raises have gone into place.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Thank you.
Board members, we'll move to 12.01, our consent agenda. It's listed on our agenda. It has the items that are on our consent agenda. So I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Does that move?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Treadaway, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The consent agenda is approved. We will move now to items for action. We'll move to 13.01, our policy for approval on second reading, Dr. Sandy Ward. Was there any other questions about this policy, Dr. Ward?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So we will call for a motion to approve-
So my comment, again, from last week, was that mental health is a big issue now. This was not addressed in the PLS update. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear. We didn't define, it's not really defined with health, mental health was not clear out of the, in the policy, and I just thought it ought to be added in that section to make it clear.
Any other questions about this, board members, since this is the second reading? So I'll ask again for a motion to approve policy 1310 and 4200 parental involvement.
I guess I'm a little confused. Are you making a motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion under, I think we ought to approve this policy with the added words of mental health services added to Q under number, is it three?
Ms. Sandage.
So am I right? Prior, I was on the policy committee. There are current, like, social work folks on that policy committee. There are also, and mental health is addressed in other areas? So was there any discussion about mental health in that review of the policy or the updates?
There was not. We talked about the actual changes in RED. So yes, it is covered in our different policy. This is about parent involvement. This is about informing parents, stuff about the school system and the mental health services that we might have, that it's, every year, when we give all this other information, that would just be something else that would be included under health, and it is, because if you go read through it, you can figure that out, but it's not necessarily clear.
So, and you're on the policy committee?
Yes.
And did you, did you bring that up during the discussion, is what I'm trying to figure out?
At the time, no, I didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I would just like to remind board members to please go through the board chair before speaking. Also, Mr. Walter, do you want to call for a motion?
I'm happy to make the motion, if I can get a second. If not, we'll just move on.
So if you'd like to put a motion out?
To approve the policy with the added words of mental health under Q, including mental health services.
So I have a motion by Mr. Walter. I have a second by Ms. Lindsey. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. So we're going to add that, it looks like.
We're adding the words mental health.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I will resubmit that and get that on the board. Thank you. Ms. Sandage.
So can you remind us, does this delay, how does this delay the process? That's what I want to understand. So will the policy go into effect as it is right now and then wait for the policy committee to review to add that? And like, what problems does that bring about?
Well, when we think about board policy, it is your policy. So right now, you have just voted to add those words. So as we go through the process, I'm going to add those words, and then once I do that, I will send it up to our, to the policy updates. So we are now, you have just voted to add those words.
So that happens today?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're so welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Ward. So we'll move to 13.02, our guarantee maximum price amendment. Mr. Brian Cohen and Mr. Tim Lauder.
Try and turn the lights back. I do apologize. So we did ask to have this kept on till at least 10 o'clock tonight, so my apologies. So yes, so tonight, we are requesting the approval of the A130/2019 GMP amendment for the demolition portion of the Mary Frances Wall project in the amount of $445,284. I did not receive any questions throughout the week regarding this item, so I'd ask that the board take action.
Okay, so I would like to have a motion to approve the guarantee maximum price amendment as presented.
Does that move?
I have a motion by Mr. Treadaway, a second by Ms. Escobar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, that's a 5-2 vote.
Yeah, I'm in the, I'm in the-
Okay, that's a 4-3 vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we will move to 14.01. I call for a motion that the meeting be adjourned.
Okay.
I have a motion by Ms. Lindsey, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.